Seven o'clock, so let's call this meeting of council to order. Would you all please rise and pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and, uh, Madam Clerk, I note that there is a forum. Do you concur?
Aye, confirm the presence of a forum.
Of the forum, and we've all seen the agenda. So, any questions about the agenda? Hearing none. We had the minutes of the meeting from May were circulated. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One abstention because Ms. Mosenko was absent from that meeting. Okay, uh, and now, uh, we would normally go to public comment, but at this point, it looks like we've got quite a few people in the audience, I think, here for some swearing in. So, I would like to move, uh, ahead in the agenda to new business and look first at ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six. It's interesting. An ordinance confirming the appointment of Glendale volunteer firefighters, establishing a one-year probationary period, and declaring an emergency. These are two, uh, potential volunteers. Assistant Chief Lerman, would you please tell us about these candidates?
Sure. Uh, Mayor, we have three. Did you?
Three? I'm sorry, there are three. Keep me on track.
Okay, no problem, sir. Okay, I certainly will, thank you. Like I said, we have three, uh, prospective candidates to swear in tonight to present to you, counsel. Uh, the first is Amir Chapman, uh, recent graduate of Princeton High School and, um, has been in several opportunities, uh, to be introduced to the firefighting, uh, service, and this is his first step with us. And we're gonna get him introduced rather quickly. And, um, he does not currently have any certifications, but we hope to have him certified by the end of the year. So that's our first candidate. Our next candidate before you is Ross Meninger. Served the United States Air Force, um, since twenty-fourteen, and then, uh, has recently retired from that, and he's, uh, works at G Aerospace. And misses the brotherhood, uh, that, uh, the service gave him and wants to get back into it. And again, we're gonna get him up and running the certification rather quickly. And then our third candidate is Kenyon Turner, Jr., twenty-twenty-one graduate of Mount Healthy High School and, uh, has a long, uh, family lineage in the fire service. His dad and uncle, um, and many friends of the family are in the fire service, and so he wants to follow in their footsteps. And, uh, his first stop here at Glendale with us.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Assistant Chief Lerman. So, is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
And a second? All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
And a second? All right, now we can call the roll.
Yes.
Thank you.
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Verchell.
Aye.
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Verchell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the ordinance is passed. Um, now we'd like to have the candidates please come up, and we'll have you sworn in. Step right up to the bill. That's good. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
Amir Chapman.
Do you hereby swear?
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
The role of volunteer firefighter for the Village of Glendale?
The role of volunteer firefighter for the Village of Glendale?
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you, and congratulations, Madam.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations, welcome. Congratulations. Thanks again. Okay. Great, good group of candidates, thank you. Next ordinance we'll look at is, uh, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven. An ordinance confirming the appointment of Dorian Eaton to position a full-time police officer with the Village of Glendale, Ohio Police Department, establishing compensation and declaring an emergency. And, um, I'll have, uh, the chief will give us a description of this candidate, but first, we will need a friendly amendment for this, and I guess it's, it'd be appropriate to just do that now. It says within section one, "The appointment is subject to a ninety-day probationary period", and that should be one year. So it's a one-year probationary period. So, is there a motion to accept that amendment? So moved.
Second.
And is there, uh, do I need a, just, no.
There's three, three reads.
Okay. A motion to dispense with three reads for the amendment itself?
So moved.
Or, no.
Not for the amendment?
Not for the amendment.
Okay, very good. Do, do, should we have a roll call vote for that, or just a voice?
I would go ahead and do the roll call for all of them.
So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Uh, for the amendment to twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Verchell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so now that we have the ordinance correct, chief, would you please tell us about this candidate?
Uh, Dorian Eaton came to us, uh, most recently, uh, from Elmwood Police Department. He grew up in Dayton, Ohio. He's got a associate's degree in criminal justice from Eastern Gateway in twenty-nineteen. He graduated the Green County Police Academy. Uh, he's been Officer of the Month in Elmwood, along with multiple citizens' recognitions, and, uh, he plans to make Glendale his career department. Looking forward to joining the team.
That sounds good. Okay. So, uh, with that, is there a motion for the ordinance itself? So moved.
Second.
All right, and is there a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Verchell.
Aye.
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Baseman.
Aye.
Mr. Kreidler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldridge.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Verchell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Dorian, would you step to the middle, please? While you're in. All right, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dorian Eaton.
Do you hereby swear?
Do hereby swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge?
The duties of, uh, police?
Officer.
Officer for the Village of Glendale?
And the duties of police officer for the Village of Glendale?
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Good, thanks again. All right, thank you. Back to then... Back to then the rest of our agenda. We will, uh, move now to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address counsel? Yes. Well, I think the lady had her hand up.
Oh, boy.
So, well, that's fine. Ladies first. Uh, would you please, uh, go to the podium, and then, uh, your name and your address, please?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Ethel Bonner, and this is?
Star Rivers.
Star Rivers. We're owners of Purpose Five One Three Event Center. We just opened in May, May the tenth. We're at three oh nine East Sharon Road, and, uh, we just wanted to come tonight and, uh, attend the meeting. We're excited to be a part of Glendale. Uh, we had a great opening, and we wanna thank Amy again for attending our opening. And as I state, we stated there, we just wanna embrace Glendale. We hope Glendale embraces us, and, um, that we learn more about, um, being involved in the community and, um, bringing some great events to the Glendale area. The purpose of our attendance here tonight is to get a better understanding of, um, some guidelines for us. We have three pending things that we need to take care of, um, in terms of the building permit. So we're looking for approval for signage. Uh, we submitted information about signage, um, certificate of occupancy, we need to change that, and as well as change of use. Uh, where we were was a business, um, office, and so we need to change it to general assembly. So, those three things, we're looking to get resolved. So we just wanted to be here tonight to, um, announce those items and get a better understanding. Anything you wanna say? I think that's it, so.
Okay, I would say, uh, continue to work with David on those items?
Yes, we did submit, uh, the paperwork, so we're just, uh, trying to see where we are.
Okay, very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Parrish.
Hi, my name is Kevin Parrish, resident of Village of Glendale at one seventy-six Washington Avenue. I'm glad of the new occupants, uh, here in the village, just to get a, a clear picture of what you're dealing with here in this historic, uh, community. I've been asking, and I will continue to ask, since I am the representative of Black residents here, because out of these six council members, and including the mayor, none of them seem to represent our interests. I've asked, on occasions at this public viewing, uh, broadcast, for them to identify themselves for who residents of color should bring their concerns to, and the mayor seems to have to interject because none of them feel the need to show their hands, although they're all voted in positions. Today I come back to ask and see if we have any progress on the C-MOM reports that I've been asking about, concerning our, uh, our death alone, which we got back in two thousand and twenty-one. Now, it shouldn't be a hard date to put down because, um, it was supposed to be prioritized. But, because we've been at this... At this part before, concerning public records, it's not that we can't, or I can't obtain the reports, but I should be able to obtain the reports a mile and a half from where I live to the village administrative office. The reports are there. The reports are, uh, you can get copies of the reports at, uh, Ohio EPA Southwest Division, and you can get copies of the reports that are submitted, uh, monthly by the design and planning part of this project. Sad to say that after money received in twenty twenty-one, that there's been no construction at all at a problem that was prioritized. This is going into its fourth year. Prioritize our water problems. Uh, raw sewers running over on the grounds and in people's yards, uh, and yet, we don't have any progress. We're still at home plate. We not, we haven't even reached first place. It's even sadder to say that the community and residents are unconcerned about the lack of honesty and transparency that this administration gives them. None. You still lie about Summit Field. Invest, uh, over seventy thousand dollars at Summit Field, and yet, for the season, there's only three dates that Summit Field is used, and I don't even see how they're used because the field is not dragged and lines are not put on the field. And yet, you still tell the public the lie about it being used. Washington Park is used five times more than Summit Field in a season. Saunders Park is used eight times, compared to three times that Summit Park, and yet you profess that this is a safe park and you can use it and play on it. When why is it la- lack of activity? They have much more parking accessibility. But you have no answers. That's what lies do. You have no answers for what, what's right in front of people's faces. And yet, I come and I, I, I bring these facts to you, and, uh, you just look dumbfounded. That's, uh, these are signs of a administration that is not productive for the community.
Give about a minute.
This I hold is a copy of the Village of Woodlands Newsletter. Tells residents what's going on. We shouldn't have to ask for what's going on. You should tell us what's going on. You know? Other than the Flower Club and GHP, what do we have going on? I mean, they should just be homeowners association because they know nothing about the history of this historic Village of Glendale. And that's sad to say. But yet again, I'm here because I represent the voices that are unrepresented by you guys there. Voted in positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Anyone else wishing to address counsel? Okay, seeing none. Um, we'll move on to the various reports, um, starting with the mayor's report, uh, addressing a few things that we continue to address almost monthly. Um, I've said before, and I think everyone here agrees, this entire council here represents the entire Village of Glendale, um, all of the people here, and, um, I don't think that there is any difference in treatment of anyone regardless of race or gender. Everyone is represented the same, and we serve the village, uh, residents the same. C-MOM reports, reports are available. Anybody that wants those can request those. Uh, Mr. Parrish has requested several times. Various records, they've been provided. The records that we have have been provided. Summit Field was used all spring by baseball and soccer. I personally was there to coach instructional, so I know that it was used every Wednesday afternoon and evening. And, uh, I'm not sure, about seventy thousand invested. I don't recall that. Uh, most of that's blood and sweat of residents, making improvements to that field almost every year. Um, we have a Friday newsletter that goes out with current events in the village, so, and that goes out every Friday. So that's pretty consistent communication. Beyond that, let's, uh, go to the normal part of the mayor's report, recognizing a, a couple of folks in the village who passed away. Unfortunately, no births to report. But, um, as far as people who have passed away, Cornelius Arthur Barnett passed on April twenty-fourth at the age of eighty-nine. Interesting, Cornelius served as the Glendale Vice Mayor for a few years here in the village. And then Sylvia Ann Brady Williams, uh, May the thirteenth passed at the age of eighty-one. I'll mention again, David Hamilton, who we did mention several months ago. Um, his family has requested that the flag be lowered for David June five, six, and seven. Uh, that coincides with what would have been his hundred and second birthday. And also, a, uh, memorial service for him, I believe that's on the Seventh at Christ Church. Don't have a time, but I'm sure that will be out there. Or you can call the church. I'm sure you can get the time. At eleven, eleven o'clock? And, uh, I think that's on Saturday. Uh, David was a, a well-loved, uh, gentleman in the village and stayed extremely active up until he was a hundred years old. It was, it was quite amazing to see him driving his car in his nineties. Memorial Day, we had a Memorial Day parade and service here. I think everyone, or most of us here attended. Couple of us were out of town. It was a wonderful event. We had perfect weather. Uh, like to publicly thank again our, our veteran speaker, Dave Conyers, our grand marshal, Sherry Conley, and then especially Hildy Von Haas, Lisa Spalding, and Linda DiMato, uh, who helped organize the parade and run the parade for us. The Glendale Garden Club will have a garden tour on June the seventh, ten to four. I think that's been well-publicized. There's also a plant swap, uh, by the Glendale Garden Club on June eleventh, noon to seven. Uh, that'll be in Rogan Park. The Community of the Transfiguration is having a music fest on June the fourth at seven PM. I'd like to recognize two residents, Jamie Redden and Chris Kennedy. Uh, last year, th- those two gentlemen restored the squirrel in front of the, s- the scout house, that squirrel sculpture there, and recently, the one here at the fire station. So make sure you take a look. Sparky. When you go out, it re- really looks good. They've, uh, fixed them, if they have any, any denser scratches, and then repainted them, and they really look great. So, recognize those two residents. Uh, a painter and an artist.
Uh, volunteer.
And volunteer, yes. No, no charge. That's very good. First Presbyterian, Presbyterian Church of Glendale will have Fill the Square with Food on June the fourteenth from nine AM until one PM. You drop off your, uh, food donations and also, um, toiletries and things like that, uh, next to the train depot right in the square. Uh, Glendale Fire Department has their summer camp coming up. That's July twenty-two to twenty-five. Registration is now open for that. It was really well-attended last year, and all the kids had a good time. And then, Burwinkle Farms will be back with their farmer's market next to the police station in the parking lot. Uh, that will start somewhere around the end of June. Uh, we were kind of kidding, that's dependent more on Mother Nature than any of us making a decision. So, end of June is the best date we can come up with for that.
When the corn is ready.
When the corn is ready. Okay. So that's, uh, the mayor's report, I believe. Yes. So we'll move now to the village administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I did not get a copy of a report circulated prior to this evening's meeting. I apologize for that. Um, but I will go through a few items, um, that are going on right now in the village. The Forest Fountain Ivy Water Main work will be, um, is scheduled to be completed in mid-June. Uh, we're making final connections now, so then road restoration will take place, and, um, all customers will be connected to the new main. Immediately after that, the crew will then move to Albion Avenue to begin work on Albion. Uh, that work will take up until, essentially up until school starts at Bethany to be completed. Um, and then road repaving will take place shortly thereafter. So right now, we anticipate that road repaving will take place in, uh, first week of September, but are, uh, hopeful that we'll be a little bit ahead of schedule and can get that done, just get that started sooner. Um, and Bethany is aware of that schedule as well. Um, we are still doing brush collection and starting to, um, repeat enforcement on small piles. So if you, um, have neighbors who are putting out small collections of brush, we do have free yard waste bags at the village office for them to place that in, rather than, uh, placing it out for collection. And then, in May, I was able to, through our aggregation program, secure a rate for August of twenty twenty-five, to begin in August of twenty twenty-five, that is ten percent the forecast, under the forecasted rate from Duke for June. Um, anticipate that energy prices will continue to go up. Uh, that is a three-year rate, so we're looking forward to hopefully some savings.
Electric, right?
Electric, correct. Hopefully some savings in the long term with, with that aggregation. Most of our questions, uh, is my report?
Very good. It sounds like the street repair is kind of on target, so that's good to know. All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the committee reports?
Absolutely. Finance Committee, please.
The Finance Committee did meet last week. It was a two-hour meeting, so thank you, members. And we reviewed the street paving, uh, project. David just mentioned the, the water part. So now, we'll be looking at the paving those roads. And, uh, so we have near, near and long-term issues with some of our streets. Um, major repairs are gonna be about three hundred and fifty dollars a square f- uh, foot. Um, those would be the road bed and, uh, road bed repair and paving. And some of the ones that just need resurfacing, those roads will be about a hundred and ten dollars a foot in today's dollars. Uh, at the end of last year, at the end of twenty twenty-four, when we were budgeting, we forecasted that this would cost about one point two million, but with significant wear and tear on some of these streets, our contract engineer says it could be over two point two million. So that was the main reason for our meeting. Uh, we discussed funding mechanisms, and one was a streets, roads, and bridges levy that could sunset at the conclusion of ten years. Uh, we'll det- we'll go through this later tonight in Resolution eighteen and nineteen, which would be the four point five and the five mil, uh, respectively. And one note that, um, some of us didn't know, Glendale voters, back in nineteen ninety-nine, they passed a similar measure related to a water sewer and stormwater, uh, levy. It was a five-year levy that sunsetted at the conclusion of the five years. Dinsmore and Shoal attorney Brenda, was it Weimer?
Weimer.
Weimer, she attended the meeting and presented the various options to us in full detail. She was great. And so, August sixth is the election submission deadline that we need to get, uh, everything to the Hamilton County Board of Elections. We also went over the twenty-five budget year-to-date and, uh, took a quick look at twenty twenty-six early projections. And then we concluded with an executive session. And when we find out some more about that information, I'll let everyone know, and if we need another meeting in the, in July or maybe even June.
All right, very good. And that's it, Becky?
Thank you. Fire Committee, please.
Fire Committee did not meet, um, during the month, but we are, uh, in the works, so we're trying to schedule something for the week of June sixteen. Um, so check your calendars and get back on that. Other than that, I turn it over to Assistant Chief Lerman.
Thank you. Chief Hutter's working on his monthly report, and we'll have that out to all of you, uh, very soon. Uh, like, uh, the mayor mentioned, um, our summer camp dates have been announced. Uh, the signups are on the website for that. Uh, and they can, uh, residents can call the firehouse if they have any questions, and how does it get signed up? Um, our fire truck, uh, has been pushed back two months, our delivery date. Um, we just heard that at the end of last week, so we're now, October, um, is the delivery date now. So, we just found that out, so I wanted to pass that on to you. So, we just found that out, so I wanted to pass that on to you. So, that, yep, that was some news for me, one. They did not give us a reason why, but Chief called and checked on it. That's what we got back from them. And then, our folks are going to be ramping up, training around the village, some area familiarization, some driver's training now that the weather's changed, so you'll see our folks out more often in the summer months. So, say hi to them when you see them. But outside of that, that's all I have for our report.
Thank you. Laws and Claims, please.
Thank you. Laws and Claims, we'll be meeting this Wednesday, June 4th at 4:00 P.M., and we'll continue our discussion on a junk and debris ordinance, and talking about our N.I.C. enforcement vendor and results of the last report he submitted. We're going to be also talking about, again, talking about maybe an amendment to council rules, so we can, in accordance with the Public Meetings Act, facilitate better communication among council members, buy-in between council members without violating the Public Meetings Act. And so, I think it's been a source of a little bit of frustration for council members. And I think that's it. So, we're going to continue those discussions.
Okay. Thank you. Parks and Recreation, please.
We did not meet this past month.
Thank you. Police Committee, please.
Police did not meet in May, and here's the chief with his report.
We did have several incidents during the month. We did have one theft. It was a small theft, but still a theft nonetheless from UDF. We did have one fraud, which was use of credit cards that were used to purchase food deliveries, and then an account was established to an online gambling site. We did have one burglary this past weekend. It was a local resident, was found in another resident's garage. There wasn't a rest made. Investigation's ongoing, and there was no loss of property during that. Of course, we're introduced to Dorian Eaton tonight. We have ended the hiring process. Right now, we are at full staff. We were able to add one additional full-time officer to our staffing, thanks to the council for passing. Police Department received our new duty weapons. Everyone went out to the range and qualified on those weapons, and are now, they have now been issued to the officers. We attended the Springdale Police Expo, able to share info on gun safety, and we passed out gun locks for at-home use. Police Officer Davidson attended Police Officer Bicycle School. Police Officer Wallace attended Crisis Intervention Updated Training. And the big one, Lieutenant Barber, has been selected as the CIT Officer of the Year for all of Northern Kentucky and Southwest Ohio.
What is CIT?
Crisis Intervention. And he'll be receiving an award at a banquet on June 28th.
June 28th. So, come out if you can. Where is that, chief?
I can get that information. I do not have the location of it.
Okay. I think it might be at the Millicourse, but if you could send an email to all of council, I'm going to try to be there. And that's a well-deserved honor for him.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Public Buildings and Historic Preservation, please.
We did not meet in May.
Thank you. Streets, Public Improvements, and Lights, please.
We also did not meet this past month, but I just wanted to comment that the Veterans' War Memorial was looking really good. I think the work that was done there before Memorial Day just made it extra nice this year, so happy with that.
And we have a sign at the entrance of Tolgate, Glendale sign also is there.
Oh, yay!
Someone had damaged the other one, so.
Haven't seen that yet. Great.
The crew moved one around, so.
Very nice. It's a nice surprise. Thank you for your input up there at the memorial as well on colors and things. I think it turned out really nice.
Yeah, it looks great.
Thank you. Utilities Committee, please.
Utilities Committee did not meet also, and we have scheduled between the committee members to meet next Monday, the 9th, at 4:00.
Okay. 4:00?
You say about 4:00?
4:00.
Thank you.
Can I? Go ahead.
Absolutely.
Before we move on, I just want to make a really quick report about the Glendale Legacy Foundation, which had a presentation yesterday upstairs here. It was good turnout, and presentation was made about the Legacy Foundation's purpose and goals, its vision for making capital improvements in the village, explained by the Board Chair, Susan McCormick. And our mayor, of course, had a couple of things to say, but I think it was well-attended, and there was a lot of good questions, and that's the update so far. We don't have another meeting planned, but it was a good turnout.
It was a good turnout, and I think it was very productive. And as Mrs. McCormick pointed out, there will be a broader communication as this moves forward and takes shape and takes form. Okay, I think we're now to the Treasurers' Report.
I submitted the report for May to council. The only thing I noted is I saw money market rate starting to slip down again, so just have to kind of keep an eye out on that, but I think we're still doing well, and we'll be able to meet our commitments for the year in terms of our revenues for the village. I also provided council the, as we eliminate the elected position Treasurer, and we're going to be looking to interview candidates to fill the position of Director of Finance, I guess, I provided council basically what my duties have been for the last eight years, and I try to put some specifics around the amount of time spent in each one of the activities so that that can be used as a guide as council interviews candidates for those roles.
I thought that was a very helpful and thorough analysis of the duties and the time required.
Well, it's, I mean, I have eight years to figure it out.
There you go. Okay. Is there a report from the clerk?
Yes, so Denise and I will be attending fiscal officer training in October, even though with the change of the position, in order to meet the audit requirements for current year, I still have to go. So, I know. What a bummer. But I just wanted to let everybody know, if you have any questions about anything, I'm happy to take them to the meeting. So, normally, they're quite entertaining because Denise and I are kind of funny. And we always bring candy, so we're always surrounded with lots of people.
Okay, very good. Now, let's move on to old business.
I just want to, you mentioned N.I.C. I didn't understand what that was when we lived back here.
Okay, well, let's.
Laws and Claims.
Is this?
Something like N.I.C.
Yeah.
I didn't know what that was.
Let's do that, Mr. Parrish.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, typically, what we'll do is remarks from the public comes during the public comment, and then we run through the whole agenda.
How long?
Yeah, well, you and me both. That's why we have to stay to the venue here. While you're present, though, there is a new business I was going to bring up at the end, and while you're here and before you have to sit through another hour of stuff, I wanted to make sure I point out to council. It was brought up in our Planning Commission meeting that Mr. Glenn Parrish has purchased 100 Washington Avenue, and that's a lot that sits next to a lot that the village owns. And he pointed out that he has purchased that lot. He's thinking about definitely keeping the historic home, potentially thinking about building a home behind that, and brought up the idea of combining in some way the village-owned property at 94 with his property at 100. So, what we thought was appropriate was we made Mr. Parrish aware of our CIC meeting on Thursday. He will be there for part of the meeting to present his thoughts, and it's appropriate there since the Glendale Community Improvement Corporation deals with property in the village, potential developments, and I believe we have, the CIC currently does have purview over that particular lot. So, just making sure, is anyone here at council opposed to that concept? I know council gives direction to the CIC, but I think it's a natural fit.
Which concept?
Yeah, I'm unclear, I mean, just the discussion about the property and how it might be used or used differently seems logical to me that CIC is the place to handle it, but.
Correct.
If that's what you're asking, I mean, that's what I think, yeah.
So, that it should go to CIC?
Yes.
And that CIC in its meeting can listen to Mr. Parrish's concept and then provide input on what their concept might be? And I think that's appropriate.
That's the place with the most, the most opportunities.
Okay. Very good. All right, with that, let's continue with the rest of our agenda. Old Business, Ordinance 2025-21, An Ordinance Establishing and Appointing the Position of Village Fiscal Officer in accordance with the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code, Section 733.262, and abolishing the elected positions of village clerk and village treasurer, and declaring an emergency. This is the third read for this particular ordinance. It is a four-page ordinance, as we're all aware. Are there any questions, comments, input on this particular ordinance from council? Hearing none? Is there a motion then for the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And should we have three reads since we want it?
Just do the roll call.
Just the roll call. Very good. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll for the ordinance?
For Ordinance 2025-21, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance passes. The next is 2025-22. This is also a third read. An ordinance prohibiting marijuana cultivation in dispensaries regardless of licensures under Ohio Revised Code, Chapters 3796 and 3780, and declaring an emergency. Any further discussion, questions, comments from council regarding this ordinance? Again, this is our third read. Hearing none? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Wait, wait. Should we have an emergency waiting?
There's nothing to wait.
No emergency?
We have to wait.
Okay, well, it will be enforced immediately, then?
If you have.
In the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance. Okay. Can declare an emergency? Perfect. All right, Madam Clerk.
We need another motion.
Now that I'm squared away, we'll get a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
All right, now we may take the roll.
For Ordinance 2025-22, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Next is 2025, we're going to 2025-28. An ordinance authorizing amendment of the 2025 appropriations of the general fund and declaring an emergency. David, can you tell us about this one, please?
Sure, I will actually just go ahead and.
Kick it over to Chief Keese.
To Chief Keese. Yep.
Cruiser 4 had a transmission go out in it. Cruiser 4 is one of our older cruisers, however, approximately two years ago, it had a new motor put in it, and it currently has less than 30,000 miles on the motor, so we thought it was feasible to get a new transmission put in it. It pretty much becomes semi-new. It will be our spare cruiser for our part-time officers, but it will be a reliable cruiser for them also.
Okay. All right, I think that's the appropriate thing to do for the reasons stated. Is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
And is there a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For Ordinance 2025-28, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For Ordinance 2025-28, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Quick one, David. Does this show up as an increase to the budget or reserve?
6,000.
Yes, to essentially replace the cost of this work in the budget because it comes out of the vehicle maintenance line.
Okay.
So, rather than pinching that line too tight, put some money back for future maintenance.
In case we need more.
In case we do. Only if we do.
Right. Next is 2025-29. This ordinance is related in some ways to 30, 31, and 32. I will read this, and I think Mr. Lumsden and David will address this one, which will also be basically addressing the next three. So, An Ordinance Authorizing Village Administrator to Renew Health Insurance with the Center for Local Government Benefits Pool, Said Program Being a Public Insurance Pool and Not Subject to Public Bid, and Declaring an Emergency. Is there a, well, David, can you give us background for this?
Certainly. As we do every June, council is presented with ordinances to renew the health insurance and dental insurance benefits for village employees. There are no changes to the structure of those benefits as far as employee and employer contributions for the next plan year, and health insurance is increasing 5.5%, which is under the budgeted increase of 7%. So, we predicted 7. We're coming in at 5.5. Dental insurance is going up 2.9. We budgeted 2, but between the two, we've got plenty of room in existing appropriations, so no reason for concern with that. But I will allow, of course, any questions as we go through these, but I'll just consider that the introduction for the next four ordinances for everyone's benefit.
Okay. So, is there a motion for Ordinance 2025-29?
So moved.
Second.
And is there a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved. Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
For Ordinance 2025-29, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For Ordinance 2025-29, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next ordinance is Ordinance 2025-30, An Ordinance Designating Employee and Employer Contributions Towards Health Insurance Premiums and Declaring an Emergency. So, this is the portion paid by employee and employer. David, is there anything to add?
No.
Okay. So, is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved. Second.
And motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
For Ordinance 2025-30, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For Ordinance 2025-30, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Next is Ordinance 2025-31, An Ordinance Authorizing the Village Administrator to Continue to Implement a Health Savings Account Plan with Health Equity and Authorizing Funding of 2,000 for the family deductible and 1,000 of the single deductible toward eligible medical expenses incurred by employees who have complied with the annual wellness assessment and declaring an emergency. David, are there any changes from last year? Same as it was?
Yep.
Before?
Same as it was.
Any questions about this ordinance? So, is there a motion for the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Okay, is there a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
For Ordinance 2025-31, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance passes. And finally, Ordinance 2025-32, An Ordinance Authorizing the Village Administrator Provide Dental Insurance with Delta Dental for All Eligible Employees and Declaring an Emergency. Any changes on this one from last year? I don't think so.
Nope.
Okay. Any questions about this? All right, is there a motion for the ordinance itself?
So moved.
Second.
And is there a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Uh, next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three. An ordinance authorizing the village administrator to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Plan Risk Management Incorporated for property and liability insurance for the village of Glendale and declaring an emergency. Uh, David, would you please give us background on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a change from last year, a welcome one. Um, for a number of years, the village has been, uh, working with the Public Entities Pool of Ohio for property and liability insurances. Uh, this year, um, received proposals from them as well as the Ohio, as it's known, the Ohio Plan, which is another public pool for, um, property and liability insurance for municipalities and townships. And the Ohio Plan price was significantly less than the, um, PEP price for the same coverages, essentially. Our, our deductible is slightly higher, but we would need a significant number of losses for that to be realized, for that to be realized with the savings that we'll be seeing in twenty-five to twenty-six. Um, so whereas we had originally budgeted about a hundred and five thousand, um, their services are coming in at, I'm realizing as I say this out right now, uh, it's not printed here, but their services are coming in, um, under eighty thousand. So we're saving, um, a significant amount of money. We're coming in about twenty-seven thousand under budget. And, um, the, so the savings compared to the PEP price is just shy of twenty thousand. So pretty significant savings and, um, feel more comfortable with them as a carrier for a number of reasons. So looking forward to getting into an agreement with them.
Yeah, good work. That's very good.
It's nice.
So i- is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
I'm not sure anyone's insurance has gone down.
Nope.
No.
Well done.
All right, Madam Clerk?
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance passes. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four. An ordinance authorizing the village administrator to prepare and submit applications to participate in the Transit Infrastructure Fund program and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. This will need a little background, David, but I think it's good news.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is permission for me to enter into any agreements that might be suitable for receiving SORDA grant funding. We're applying again this year. Um, hopefully they'll be a little bit more welcoming than they, than they were last year. Uh, we are applying for three projects. We're applying for the sing, the Signal at Congress Coral in Washington again. Uh, that is being applied for a seventy-thirty match, and that's about a four hundred and fifty to four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project. We are also applying for resurfacing for East Fountain and Ivy as well. We are applying for that at a fifty-fifty match. We're increasing the village's contribution towards that in an attempt to get s- some additional money off of the price. Um, so any, any reduction in the cost of that work would be beneficial to the village. So hopefully those, uh, applications are enticing enough for SORDA to fund them. We'll find out probably into the, in the fall, uh, whether or not we've received our funding for this year. But this, uh, ordinance allows me to make those applications.
And Coral and Washington?
The Signal. Replace that.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, so any questions? Is there a motion for the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
And a motion to dispense with three reads?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance passes. Next is, uh, a resolution, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen. A resolution declaring the necessity of levying an additional tax in excess of the ten mil limitation within the village and requesting the county auditor to certify matters in connection therewith. This particular one is four point five, and the other that we will be requesting is five point zero for the end of our finance committee meeting. And, um, David or Will or combination, if you want to go through this. I know council was there when we decided what we were going to do.
Oh, okay. Thank you, everyone. Um, so this resolution and then Resolution twenty-five nineteen are, uh, known as the Resolutions of Necessity, and they are the first step in placing a new property tax levy on the ballot in the state of Ohio and specifically Hamilton County. We discussed at the last finance meeting and have evaluated the severe need for a number of village streets to receive resurfacing or reconstruction in some cases, and discovered that the cost of doing, completing that work is, is, say, detrimental to the long-term financial health of the village, given how much work needs to be accomplished and frankly, how quickly it needs to be accomplished to get our streets, uh, in a, in an acceptable condition. The strategic plan processes identified infrastructure as the key priority for the village and in, in effort to achieve that goal, uh, this is a, a step in that direction to secure funding for the next ten years from a property tax levy that is solely and only dedicated to the reconstruction, repaving of streets. As, as I like to kind of tongue-in-cheek say, asphalt and the labor to install it is the, are the only things that are covered by this funding. So the, um, this first resolution covers four point five mils, which would generate approximately six hundred and thirteen thousand per year. The next resolution will cover five mils and we'll say that we'll get to that number we get there. Um, but this resolution will receive, will be sent to the Hamilton County Auditor. It will verify the amount. Then once council selects which option they'd like to see on the ballot, uh, there'll be another resolution. They, these two, this one and then the next one will be forwarded to the Board of Elections to be added to the November twenty twenty-five general election ballot.
So, and David, in the meeting, you indicated that to redo all of the streets or reasonable time freight, we may need like almost eight million dollars.
Depending on how much council wants to, wants to tackle, yes. Um, and that, as, as Mr. Cradler said during his report, covers, um, some, say, full-depth cost of repair, which is about three hundred and fifty dollars a foot, which is what Ivy would require. Uh, whereas some streets like Washington are newer streets and better condition, still on the roadmap for, no pun intended, for this work, but, um, are in better shape, so their cost would not be as significant. But, uh, yes, about eight million dollars, but that's a, I think, a ceiling, if, if you will, of, of cost. The council would have the ability then to control and regulate timing of those streets compared to other infrastructure projects, water, sewer, storm, those kinds of things, so.
And, and without that, using the fund that the, we receive from the state, it would take us twenty years.
More than.
To, to achieve anything, so.
That's about right.
This helps us really accelerate road projects here
Yep.
and try to stay on pace with water main replacement and then the subsequent road resurfacing. So, uh, I'd like to keep the pace we have.
And meet the, the desires of the residents who have said this is a priority.
Take care of infrastructure.
And it, it's bad, so we need to get our spines together on this one.
Mm-hmm.
I think this represents a, kind of a comprehensive financial, uh, capital plan for the village, and I think it's, it, it was well done and well organized by David. There was excellent dialogue in the finance committee meeting, and I, I think we're at the place we need to be. So, given that, is there a motion for this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Second, and, uh, do we, uh, have a motion to dispense with the three reads?
So moved. Second.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
For Resolution twenty twenty-five eighteen, uh, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For Resolution twenty twenty-five eighteen, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
And Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, that resolution passes. Now, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen is the same resolution, but it would represent a five mils levy, uh, a resolution declaring the necessity of levying an additional tax in excess of the ten mil limitation within the village and requesting the auditor to certify matters in connection therewith. So, uh, I don't think we need any further explanation there.
I would like to add one thing. Uh, compared to the previous resolution, for four and a half mils would generate six hundred and thirteen or so thousand a year. The five mils would generate about six hundred and eighty-one per year, based on our estimates.
Six eighty-one.
The auditor will confirm that.
Will confirm.
Hey, David.
Yep.
Um, in the previous, in the previous, uh, vote about when you said it could be fifty-fifty that it applied for with Ivy and Fountain.
Yes.
Would that change, would we know that before, uh, August, the August deadline?
I don't know if we would know it before the August deadline, but we would very likely know it before, if this gets to the ballot before the November election. Um, had that said, we could very easily, if, if we are able to secure that grant, any additional revenue could accelerate street repair even further. Um, but it's, it's, yeah, it's unclear that we'll see it before the August deadline.
Okay. So, and David, so the auditor will give us this information so we can talk to residents on how much it's going to cost each, each one of us?
Yes, yeah, we're going to get this information, um, I believe in finance, I discussed at town hall in June or July to, um, have a open conversation.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions about this ordinance, or resolution, I'm sorry? Okay, is there a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
And is there a motion, oh, I'm sorry, second?
Second.
Second, and is there a motion to dispense with the three reads?
So moved. Second.
Second, all right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
For Resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For Resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
And Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
And thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, that resolution passes. Last is a Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty. A resolution authorizing the conditional use of land at fifteen East Fountain Avenue for an above-ground swimming pool to be constructed pursuant to certain conditions. So, um, David, you may want to give a little background on this since, uh, at the planning meeting, there was one individual that brought up the idea of the privacy fence.
Yes.
Required for other, but could you give us just kind of the whole?
Yeah.
Swimming pools in historic district and what we're looking at?
So, um, the application was brought to planning for both a, um, conditional use for a private swimming pool as well as appropriateness review for, um, an exterior architectural project for the construction of the pool. And, um, during the course of the discussion, there was some reference to a previous approval in South Troy where the installation of a privacy fence was required, uh, as part of the, the, uh, conditional use approval for, for the pool. Um, there was some discussion among the planning commission about recommending a similar, uh, condition to council. Um, that motion was, was made, there was no second, and then the motion to approve is submitted. Without that fence requirement was made and seconded and unanimously approved by, or was there one vote? There was one vote.
There was one no.
Yeah, there was one no, so, um, all members voting yes but one.
The concerns seem to be screening since an above-ground pool would not be a typical feature on a historical home. Um, this particular house did have a above-ground pool previously at one point, and it was removed. I think some of the planning members were kind of satisfied. There's some screening with some bushes and things, but the, there, there was, there was some level of concern about a six-foot privacy fence was required for the other, and they're kind of waiting on this one. Um, it did pass planning, though, and they're recommending to us that we proceed.
And there were, and neighbors are, approved this, right?
Neighbors were notified, um, the, it's essentially hearsay, but the applicant did indicate that one neighbor would, the neighbor directly behind them on Congress was, um...
Was okay.
Accepting of the, the proposal.
And the other neighbor didn't.
There was complaint, there was no complaint. All neighbors received a certified and regular mail notice.
Okay.
I mean, I looked at the picture, and it looks pretty screened, and there's a big circle, so there was...
There was something there.
There was something there before.
Yeah.
Additionally, the topography of the lot is pretty favorable to the spot where the pool was, it dips. So it's, it is, um, there is some, some visual break.
It's a little less visible from the street, from, from Fountain.
Yes.
So there is a stockade-style fence on Congress.
So is the one in South Troy not in the historic district, and this one is?
No, it is.
It is.
The South Troy one, uh, among other things, the homeowner was installing a privacy fence of a portion of the property anyway, but, um, the, the property is much closer to the street,[1475.62] but the, the property is much closer to the street, and the pool is, it's a much flatter lot, so the pool would be, would have been more visible to the public right away than
So the intent of privacy is still maintained because of the shape of the property, maybe, so. Because otherwise, it sounds inconsistent.
It was one of the things that was discussed.
Yeah. I think they were content to say there's some screening there. Okay, so is there a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And is there a motion to dispense with the three reads?
So moved.
Second.
I prefer to have a three. I prefer to have another read.
Wait, wait.
I prefer to have another read, just in case, to make sure the neighbors were okay with this.
Okay.
But I know you said one. One is fine, and one didn't respond, but
There was, you know, well, according to the applicant, the, the neighbor to their south. It's near his driveway. That's Mr. Godby is all right with it. And then there were no other responses from any of the other neighbors.
So there were no objections?
No objections.
Okay.
No objection.
Yeah.
And everyone got a letter, so.
I guess my, my concern would be, it's June second, and if we have three reads, these folks aren't going to have a pool this summer, and
They would not.
Right. And there's no, but there's no objection.
There is no objection, yeah, there is no objection.
There was no objection. I saw, it seemed as though planning was content with screening, that there is some amount of screening there.
I don't know if it helps to look at a picture of the lot.
No, I'm familiar with it, yeah.
Is there any concern with consistency, or do you think, is there any concern?
No, definitely not.
Okay.
And it meets the conditional use of the historic village. The actual pool does.
The conditional use applies to all private swimming pools, regardless of above-ground, below-ground, or in-ground. So yes, it would. On its own, it would. It would. But planning has approved it.
I just remember this council, I remember we went over the South Troy one. I remember that issue, was that two years ago? And it was pretty adamant that they needed one, but I understand it's flat there.
It's, it's much more visible at South Troy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
The purpose of a conditional use review is to recognize that a type of use might be appropriate based on certain very specific things to that particular lot. And here is that, that's functioning perfectly in this situation. You've got flat lot versus some topography, screening, no screening, visibility's different. So you have some elements that are variables that make, that make me comfortable with them.
Some existing fencing. The main road is Congress, and it is, has a stockade-style fence. Okay. So back, we had a motion for the ordinance and a second. We had a motion to dispense with three reads, but no second, so let's go back to that. Is there another question?
No, I just
No, we had a second.
We did have a second.
Yeah.
Okay, we did have a second. All right. Any other questions, concerns? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the rule then?
For Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, to dispense with the three reads, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
For Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty, Ms. Mosenko.
Aye.
Mr. Basemuth.
Aye.
Mr. Cradler.
Aye.
Ms. Baldrich.
Aye.
Ms. Flurry.
Aye.
And Ms. Rochelle.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, that resolution passes. We do not have financial reports at this time?
Yeah, we haven't, no, it's June, yeah.
June two, June on, yeah.
I don't think they even sent us statements yet.
Can't you please, the Saturday? All right, so at this point, unless there's any other new business, I think we've covered it all. We talked a little bit about the, the legacy fund. We got to speak about Mr. Parrish coming to CIC.
Yeah, I just, I, I should have mentioned this during my report for laws and claims, that I did attend the planning meeting this afternoon or this evening, and the planning commission said that they would approve the, or I should say, there were the conflict between the zoning and our chicken coop or run, poop.
The run started to be the question.
There was a conflict there. David resolved that with language, and it was approved by zoning, so now it's going to come back to counsel.
Next month.
Next month.
Okay.
Next month.
I saw.
Wasn't very artfully explained, but did I miss anything?
No, you're right, no.
No, okay, all right. So that, that was the update on the chicken ordinance, which, you know, has created a lot of interest in Glendale, so I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that it was, you know, finally back on track and
It, I, I actually may correct myself here. So leave it, might actually come in August because of the notification deadline requirement, because it is a zoning code amendment. So there might be some more time for folks to discuss it and debate it, but
And then there's always a three reads.
Yes.
Oh, they're for our, our purposes.
Yes, 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 which I think that we probably, well
Yeah, right, right.
They get done by the end of the year.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
I, yeah, I don't, yeah, it's okay.
Also coming to counsel, our amendments to guidelines, the historic design guidelines, they were discussed relative to new, to the height of new construction.
Okay.
Historic district.
That helps provide for the chicken.
Yeah.
Chickens. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we're in the tent.